City Council to order. First item is, we need to add to the agenda the item that we agreed we would forward to council on this morning's committee of the whole and that is the request for items in support for the trip to China by the Chamber of Commerce. And so we've got some wording on that that we'll introduce under lead items. And can I have a motion to adopt the agenda with that addition? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Wires, all those in favor? We have three sets of minutes. August the 19th, committee of the whole minutes, a motion to adopt. Counselor Doherty, Counselor Kendall, all those in favor? August the 19th, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counselor Rorscheggin, Counselor Kragg, all those in favor? And 19th, special meeting minutes, motion to adopt. Counselor Kendall, Counselor Doherty, all those in favor? No petitions or delegations? And we're down to council reports and I'll start with a volunteer at one end of the table. Counselor Smith, you're on.
Thank you, Worship. You know, a bunch of stuff happened this week, or this reporting period. I was at the Downtown Merchant Association and talked about how the fly-in and all the fly-in, the fall fair, how those things were all even tied together. We're having another debriefing this week to kind of see what improvements might be made for next year and how we can more actively engage the farmers market. A lot of the farmers market vendors had indicated they were going to be in attendance and for, you know, one reason or another weren't able to. So the shuttle bus that we had set up to kind of connect the events, well, it just didn't work out as well. And hopefully if we just build that expectation for events to come that people will recognize that it's a staple and that they can count on a team there for them. So, you know, just upward and onward next year. The EDAC met, I think it was Tuesday last, and we talked about, you know, what accomplishments EDAC has come up with and where EDAC, you know, might look to go. And through a great deal of discussion, we came up with the idea that EDAC really needs to step it up to the next level. And this is kind of following the conference that Counselor Kendall and myself went to in Vancouver with the Economic Development Association. And then a kind of subsequent meeting, we had Tom Thompson from Nelson, who, according to many of the attendees at that conference, have a very solid economic development model. And so we, you know, talking with Tom Thompson, we found out basically how they run their show and ran that model by our ECGV committee. And they agreed that perhaps it's time now that, you know, as we've now, we've basically got the momentum rolling that we need to take this up to the next level. So we boiled all that conversation down into a resolution, which I'd like to share. The motion is as follows. The EDAC resolves to recommend that city councils support the concept of an economic development partnership as modeled by Nelson. And further, that EDAC explore this model in more depth and provide a report for the October 15th. Can we do the voting?
All right, you want to make that as a motion?
That's a motion, yeah.
And a secondary for that is Counselor Kendall, discussion, Counselor Rorscheggin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like the idea and I see no real problems with it. I'm as curious as to why it's necessary, you feel it's necessary to make a motion to move forward.
Because it is a council committee. And so if we're looking at changing the structure of the committee, like even removing EDAC as a committee and changing it completely to this new format, then it would take a resolution of council to make that happen because it is a council committee. So we can't just arbitrarily say, yeah, we'd like to change the way we do things.
No, no, I appreciate that. Your wording was partnership, so I had thought two separate entities working together.
No, no, well, in essence, it is. Like, the way it works in Nelson is the Nelson Chamber of Commerce works Community Futures and with the city has a core, basically, a core economic development advisory committee. And then they bring in different, you know, stakeholders to consult with and make their policy decisions. So that's the model Nelson is based on, same with Power River. And so that's the kind of model that we were looking to explore.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and go down that motion, all those in favor. Gary, I'd like to say too that maybe you could introduce what you're doing to the BDC, it's on tomorrow night's.
Yes, yes, I'm going to be there.
Are you? Okay, well, and maybe I'd have to get permission from the group, but I'd invite you to speak to that after meeting to explain where your group is going.
Okay, okay. The second part is with respect to the motion that council passed at the last council meeting, with respect to supporting the Ag Society and its efforts to make Grand Forks a GE-free zone. I think that as a council, making those kinds of decisions or deliberating over them as a council is beyond the scope and curve of our jurisdiction and our power. And it puts councillors on the hook for their individual beliefs with respect to any matter of that sort of nature. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be GEE, it could be anything. Muthanasia, you know, cats, you know, whatever. But it's beyond the scope of this council to undertake those matters. I think reviewing the petition and agreeing, of course, I have a strong background in agriculture and, you know, the fact that I'm the crop protection manager for two of the major nurseries here should say something, that's not just so I can spray pesticides, believe me. But that I come armed with facts and that's what I like to make my decision based on. And in my opinion, the council was not given the facts. The petition itself was flawed in that there's a large number of people that were asked to sign it from outside of our community, so they don't even qualify as petitioners. The fact that council was not given appropriate information, it was a one-sided sort of argument. I think that the decision the council made was not sound. And I would like to let me rescind that decision.
Rescind that motion.
Yes.
Could we hear the motion? Do you, I wonder, did you have that motion from last meeting? It was there. Openly read the motion first and I'll put a secondary on.
Okay. I do have a copy of the motion right here because it was printed in the paper.
Which may or may not be as accurate as what our secretary. Can I see the motion? There it is.
Worship, here's the motion that was brought up the August 19th regular meeting. Result that council supports the principled endeavors and initiatives of the Bounder Regional Agricultural Society with regard to a genetically engineered free zone for the city of Grand Forks. And further that those members of council who will be attending the 2013 UBCM will consider the genetically engineered free B.C. resolution with voting at the 2013 UBCM convention.
Thank you. And looking for a secondary for this motion to rescind the previous motion. All secondary discussions. Counselor Kragg, second motion. And I'm open for discussion that draw your attention to the in-principle wording and the endeavors of the group rather than of our council or city and to consider voting for the GMO resolution at UBCM. So opening it with that, that I think that clearly defines where a lot of councillors at that meeting hung their hat on those particular words. And Counselor Smith, opening.
Hey, I'm looking at the Society for a GE-Free B.C., which is the group that basically spearheaded this whole campaign. And as a headline, Grand Forks is now a GE-free zone. That is a proclamation that they cannot make. We are not GE-free. They cannot demonstrate that, they can't prove it, they can't prevent the introduction of GE. What I'm saying is that this is fundamentally a hollow proclamation and it can't be backed up. And again, we're being put on the spot for our personal beliefs on no scientific basis. We have nothing to support this, to say this is the direction we need to be going. And as again, I say that as a council, it's not within our peer view to make these decisions.
Further discussion?
It's a Society for a GE-Free B.C.
Society for a GE-Free B.C.
GeFreeB.C.wordpress.com.
Is that the correct address?
GeFreeB.C., all one word.
G-E-F-R-E.
B.C.
Uh-huh.
Dot wordpress.
Dot.
Wordpress.
Wordpress?
W-O-R-D-P-R-E-S-S dot com.
Okay. Okay, and hearing no further discussion, shall I ask her to question?
Well, I have more information.
Well, I don't know, council, and no one else has any comments on it.
I just don't comment. I think that if the organization is making a statement like we're a GE-free zone, I don't think that feels like it's in good faith to what the resolution said that we support them in principle. And I think if they've taken that wording and turned it into we're now a GE-free zone, I have some issue with that. That goes beyond supporting the principles of GE-free.
Okay. Can I point out that we were an idle-free zone for a couple of years too? That didn't stop people from idling, but, you know.
That's within our jurisdiction.
I'm not going to support the motion because I think that this goes hand in hand with the organic movement in our community and the kind of commitments in principle to the concept of safe food. And even though I agree with Gary that the science is pretty vague at this point, I think the commitment here is providing safe food within our community and I want to encourage that group in the direction they're going. Counselor Wires.
Yes, to you, Worship, to our CEO. Would it be, we should actually send a letter then to them, asking them to remove from their website.
I disagree. I don't think that's a misrepresentation to say that we're a GE-free zone. It certainly doesn't mean that there'll be no GE here, but it means that they as a group, as an initiating group, are desiring to move in that direction. So I don't think that's a big violation personally. Would you like me to ask the CEO?
Well, if the balance of council feels that we're misinterpreted on this website, that we do support it in principle, I mean, encourage, but we haven't labeled our community GE-free. We wouldn't want to get, we wouldn't want people to have the wrong perception.
I wouldn't like them to have the wrong perception that we're not committed to it, but I take your point. And further discussion? Counselor Smith?
I've just, you know, I, it is a declaration and they're going to take this to UBCM and they're going to say there are 62 communities that want a GE-free zone. They're not going to have anti-words on the wording of the resolution because this is the way it's going to come out, is that there are 62 communities that say they are GE-free. You can't compare what you can't prove. That's what I'm saying. It has nothing to do with the principle of what they're going after. What I'm saying is that we're, you know, A, we're not being given the complete information to make a sound decision and then we're being misrepresented along the line here. That's my issue.
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from what I see here in the resolution is council has not made a decision either way of what they're going to do. What they're saying is they're supporting the initiatives for the agricultural society to proceed with their endeavors to investigate. I think that Counselor Smith is pointing out there's lots of science behind this that could prove that it's either positive or negative. But the, I think the intent of council was to support their endeavors to move forward to provide the city with more information because they're acting as a body for the city in respect to providing information. I think the proclamation, if somebody was to come back to the city and they were to ask this, if we are a GE-free zone, I would actually, from a legal perspective, we haven't made that decision, but we've supported their initiatives. So people will write things in newspapers, they will write things on websites, and they'll write things on posters, and there's things that we can't control. They might suggest that we are something that we're not. And they might suggest something that we, you know, something else that we might be. But at this point right now, there has been no definitive statement made by the city to say that we're yes or no, yes or no on this. We're just saying, go after it. Because there's, I think Counselor Smith pointed out, there's all kinds of things that, from genetically modified, things that are happening from food to plants that are going on around us every day. But I think this group is actually looking at it from a social perspective, from a food perspective, to keep, trying to keep food safe is what they can do to introduce the information to our community. And I thought that's where our council was looking at saying that, you know, they support their initiatives for providing more information, so.
Okay, so I suggested there's probably two separate issues here, one whether we rescind this and one whether we ask them, as Counselor Wires suggested, to remove our name from that. Counselor Rorscheggin, then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I wasn't here for that past meeting, so I didn't hear their presentation. It's difficult, I guess, to follow some of this wording that went on. However, by listening to the motion, it seems very simple. It doesn't seem like we're committing ourselves to anything. It seems like we're just taking a stance. However, hearing what Counselor Smith said in regards to this proclamation that was written on the website, I do take offense to that because it isn't sound at all like the motion that was carried by this council. However, with that being said, I have no reason to rescind this motion because the motion itself seems reasonable at the very least. However, if there was a way we can, as Counselor Wires suggested, let them know that they're misrepresenting us as a council in their statement, I would be proud of that. However, I see no reason to rescind it inasmuch as I'm not taking a stance either way.
Right. Counselor Kragg.
Same website. It says, "Our definition of a GE-free zone is a municipality or a group of municipalities which has passed a resolution against GE crops and animals within its jurisdiction." And then it says there's 61 GE-free zones. So that motion was not, doesn't fit that criteria.
That's right. You don't feel it bans anything at this point?
No, supporting that group to go forward, but if their definition of the organizers is this is what a GE-free zone is, that's not what the motion said.
But that's what they're calling it.
Yeah.
I just want to point out too, that the motion does say the goal is to, let's say, the endeavors and initiatives of the Bounder Regional Agricultural Society with respect to a genetically engineered free zone for the city of Grand Forks. So that is the goal. So it doesn't have anything to do with science, it doesn't have anything to do with any support, supporting information. It is the goal of them to make this genetically free zone.
Yes.
That, again, flies in the face of any scientific background, to support any reason to make it this genetically free zone. I mean, they talk about safe food, but there's no background, there's no proof to say that there's.
Genetic engineering is bad for you.
Exactly, exactly.
And that can be.
Like, let's get scientists in here and speak to the other side of the issue, you know? If we're going to be the ones making those kinds of decisions, then we should be hearing from both sides of the table. This, in fact, this motion does in fact say that this is the direction and the goal that this group has set before and that we support that goal by virtue of supporting the motion.
And I do. At least on the motion, I, again, and I certainly would entertain a second motion to deal with the posting of us as a GE-free community. However, the question on the floor, ready for the vote, is, do we support rescinding our previous motion? All those in favor of rescinding? All those opposed? Okay, thank you. And would anyone, just to wrap this up, like to deal with challenging their use of our community as a GE-free community? Would that be something that we should entertain?
Well, I can try to look up the website.
Could we ask that we clarify that situation with our staff rather than passing a motion at this point? Could we ask them whether or not that, well, no, let's not ask them, let's tell them. We're not comfortable with them putting us up at this point. Is that what council is feeling?
Yeah.
As a GE-free community, that we are supporting of them, but only in terms of the principles and in consideration. Mr. Allen.
If you'd like, Mr. Mayor, what we can do is we can prepare a letter to let them know that, again, the wishes of council were, according to this resolution, were to support their initiatives moving forward with the information coming forward to the city. But at that point right now, there was really no, it was the work that they were doing. It's not necessarily the proclamations or anything like that because they weren't, you know, council was not told at this point when that resolution was coming forward that they were being.
Added to the list.
Added to the list and they were not going to be, that information wasn't there. It was just, it felt like there was a principles of the meeting where they were just coming to voice their concerns from the Ag Society as our local area. They weren't letting everybody know that, oh, by the way, we're going to be putting this out there, so in advance of UBCM, you'll be noted as one of the 62 communities that has made this proclamation, which I don't think council did make.
No, I think they've gone too far and I think that's the voice of council at this point. Okay. Counselor Smith, you still have the floor and your personal report.
That's it.
That's it?
That's all you have.
Counselor Kragg.
I have.
Oh, I'll get it.
Counselor Kendall.
Thank you, Worship. On August 23rd, I along with yourself and several other members of council attended the unveiling of our new city entrance signs. I believe there'll be a positive impact on the image of the city for many years to come. August 27th, I attended the monthly meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Committee with Counselor Smith and he's gone over that. September 3rd, I along with yourself and several other councillors met with our new M.L.A. Linda Larson here at City Hall and had a brief informal discussion about some of the city's concerns and hopes for the future. September 4th, I attended the monthly meeting of the Regional Chamber of Commerce. The chamber's planning for its AGM, its biz-to-biz events, as well as its annual small business awards in October. And they're excited about the direction that they're going and that is my report.
Counselor Wires.
Thank you, Worship. Well, I'm going to begin my report with the August 20th. I attended a regional collaboration working group, which is a committee of AKBLG and Columbia Basin Trust. The objective of this group, working group, is to agree to priorities for the coming year and put tangible plans in place to achieve them. So the regional collaboration working group exists to advance collaborative visioning and planning and action-oriented initiatives for the region. And it evolved through AKBLG because the Columbia Basin, you know, it is our local government for the region. But it does also include the Columbia Shushua Regional District. And so we have representation there from Mayor Andrew McCracken from Vailmont and Mayor Dave Raven from Revelstoke. So it's evolved to see if we can bring our region together more cohesively in working together. Or as one of our executive directors, Mayor Chin Chinni from Fruitvale, described it as more regional peace and working cooperation. So we did meet in Nelson on August 20th and the 21st to introduce and look at our 2014 projects, which you'll be hearing about. Further to that, August 25th was the Grand Forks Airport Appreciation Day Fly-In, and she'll ensign. And we recorded 31 visiting aircraft at the airport, including CFB Moosechance, Harvard Two came in with their flight crew and the Pentictum Warbirds. The generous fuel sponsorship by the city of Grand Forks was greatly appreciated. However, the Warbirds left before filling up. I'm serious! But they also weren't in a position to really do a lot of flying for us because they were missing one airplane that was down with mechanical issues, so there's only two of them that came over. So we're going, the Flying Association will follow up with the city for a 2014 event. And next year's event will be on Sunday, August 24th. And we've actually been approached by the Grand Forks Fall Fair President, Jason Mackay, and he would like to see our two events complement one another. So Counselor Smith, your comment about the not-so-popular or used bus was actually noticed by, you know, and both of us, both organizations noticed the availability for, I don't know how many used it, but people saw it and somebody must have used it because we were told about it. And so they'd like to see that in place next year as well. So once again, yes, we were also told that farmers market would be, because the interview that they had with the Gazette indicated such, but we only had six vendors up there as well. And, you know, we critiqued the fly-in at the Flying Association meeting last week. And overall, it was very successful. We had 61 attend the runway theater Saturday evening when.
Top Gun.
Top Gun and former Canadian military Top Gun pilot Jock Mackay gave the very interesting presentation for over an hour. And in the crowd was a young man from Grand Forks who did all his flight training here at, all his flying here at Grand Forks Airport with his dad. And he was trained with, I think he was back with Cookney Airways at the time of the day. But it was Tom Isup and he is now a, on the F-18 training pilot at Moosechance. So he's a military pilot. So the two of them, you know, you have the new generation sitting in the crowd and you have a retired Sabre Pilot Top Gun, and they were bouncing off of one another. So it was a very, very interesting, because to hear, you know, how do you make those maneuvers and the G-forces and that? And when they talk to one another, they're doing the same thing that they did 40 years ago or 50 years ago in the conflict. Those exercises and those operations never changed, but it was quite thrilling. So overall, we had a good turnout, great turnout. Our vendors and that were very happy and we hope to work with the Fall Fair and many other events that are happening, let's say, weekend, to make it cohesively complementing one another. And maybe we can fly over the Fall Fair. So I'll continue. On August 27th, we stayed by your Brazilian environmental engineers, Valeria and Priscilla. The GIS mapping of the riparian areas in Grand Forks along with the Grahamby and Kettle Rivers provided excellent cohesive working relationship with the regional district's Kootni Kettle River watershed management plan and Grahamby Wilderness Society's riparian throw the SESMA projects. So we wished the young ladies all the best and the experience that they took home with them back to the University of Wales was overwhelming because they had opportunities to visit, to attend ALNG.
The Local Government Management Association Conference?
LGMA.
LGMA.
LGMA and Urban Systems that do a lot of work for our community. And on August And on August 28th, we met, council met with M.L.A. Linda Larson at City Hall for the first time. And we briefly covered our highlights for 2013 and what Grand Forks is up to and where we'll be seeking provincial support in the future. August 29th, I represented the city at the Regional District Cooney Boundary Monthly Board Meeting. So if anybody is interested in that agenda package at all, I think I have all 585 pages here plus all the handouts. It is a very extensive monthly package. But I will highlight a few of the discussions that happened at that meeting. Well, the next meeting will be at Crispina Lake Community Hall on September 26th. That's where the new venue will be. And we'll be seeing a new meeting schedule format for 2014 for the CAO visiting communities as well. So it adds up to that. And the Boundary Regional Transit Service results were included in the agenda package for the other side of the mountain. Just a couple of highlights, and I have page 35 earmarked here if anybody would like to see it. Their total system ridership, which effectiveness of the system year over year was up by 4.8% with a total revenues up by 9.7%. And they reported no passenger injuries.
Good for them.
Accident rate. Area D Director Grace McGregor asked for letters of support for Cyback's Rural BC project and I advised Grace that Grand Forks City Council had submitted a letter on June 14th. And I also forwarded her a copy at her request and she thanked Grand Forks for their support. Local municipalities and regional districts have been asked to provide a community promotional gift basket for the upcoming UBCM Cooney-Grown booth that the region has. And Your Worship, you've probably been involved with this since the 2010 Olympics.
It's very popular.
It is very popular, isn't it? And each year, they ask the participating members to make up a gift basket. So we have spoken with our management team to look at that. And they're also asking for us to, those who will be attending, to help man the booth. So if you can volunteer at all, you have to get ahold of Counselor Margery Rotvold at Rotvold, R-D-K-B, at Shaw.ca. R-O-T-B-O-L-D-R-D-K-B at Shaw.ca or call her at 250-231-5671. And as I said, this particular promotional venue evolved from the 2010 Olympics when Audrey Rippon from the Columbia Power Corporation initiated the regional...
So just to be clear, it's only on for two days?
Yeah, Wednesday and Thursday. So those are the only...
That's the only days when you come?
Yeah, Wednesday and Thursday. And then the set up and tear down too, but Margery can go over. She had that list, so I just put the mayor and myself on the list. And so the gift packages are given away, there's several each day given away, the gift packages. And so they're also looking to send the venue, Cooney-Grown, to the 2014 UBCM conference in Nibley Hall. And Chair, okay, the Columbia River Treaty Newsletter, Local Government Committee Report from Linda Worley, Director Linda Worley, was circulated. And I have that report here. But of specific note is the CBT Symposium to be held in Preston on October 18th to the 20th. And AKBLG will be encouraging its members to attend this symposium in lieu of regional workshop that we normally have each year in the fall. And so that will be brought up at UBCM and there'll be a follow-up news release that will come out after our meeting at UBCM. Fire Prevention Week is October 6th to the 12th. We also received a handout on Fire Prevention Week. There are over 10,000 volunteer firefighters in B.C. And this represents 70% of the B.C. firefighters. So a huge number of volunteers there. The CITIT report, I have the CITIT report here and I just wanted to make a note, a highlight from there. Their funding commitments to date have topped $37 million. And Area D interim director, Holly Russell, spoke to his recent goat grazing workshop. Did you attend that? Well, goats eat the widespread orionism.
I saw you said ghosts.
No, goats.
Ghosts.
Ghosts and deer.
And to note, we are actually the envy of our neighbors, neighboring communities. Trail City Councilor was asking when the Green Didn project was going to be coming to Trail, just like Grand Forks enjoys. So that was his words exactly. And the next, finally, the next Grand Forks Environment Committee meeting will be held October 30, October 17th at the Regional District Boardroom at 11 o'clock here in Grand Forks. And that's my report.
Thank you. Counselor O'Durie?
Your Worship, August has been a busy time. I attended a car show at the City Park. It was a wonderful day, a lot of colors and lots of people. I attended the Fall Fair Parade and that was a nice parade, a great fair. And the airport, I attended the airport and raised money on the 50.
No, it was, we didn't have a...
Oh, yeah, donations. Yeah, so that was...
Our lives just didn't come through. So we could only ask for donations for...
We still got money there. And there was a lot of people. It was a great day. And the hockey season is back on, Your Worship. Waterborne and Marner Hockey.
I saw they had their first name.
Two games.
Yeah.
Didn't win yet, but we'll win one day. And Your Worship, I went by the bonus in the park today and they did a wonderful job. It looked great there. It'll be all ready for summer next, 2019.
They laid the sod and...
Yeah, they laid the sod. I lose all complete, but they... They look great. And thus, I want to report, Your Worship.
Thank you. Counselor Roshan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of things here I'd like to touch on. First off, I'm glad to see the upgrades that have been installed in City Park. It's nice to see and hear children playing soccer down there. It makes this past five years well worthwhile after all the arguments and disagreements, the fact that it's finally done and it's finally being used. It's warms my heart. Secondly, to touch on what Counselor O'Durie mentioned, the Water Bruins play their last exhibition game tomorrow at 7 o'clock in the Hoover Valley at the Grand Forks Arena. Beyond that, Thursday, they play at 7 o'clock as well as, that's their first game of the season in Grand Forks. Their start times are now 7 o'clock as opposed to 7:30, which they've always been in the As Counselor O'Durie said, they haven't won a game yet, but hopefully they will. They can score it. They can keep the puck or their own net. They're going to have to do that as well. We'll get it. We'll get it, exactly. Another point, being that school's now in session, Grand Forks Secondary High School Sports is running up once again. That's a free outlet for those who don't want to pay money to go to sporting events. Typically, if you go on the GMSS website, they will show you what games are on, what sport, on what days. And so the families, very easy to come out. It'd be nice to see more people watching and supporting kids in community. And being that school's back in session, I believe Counselor Smith was going to mention it, however, in amongst everything else, if he passed over it. Counselor Smith and myself would like to attend, or attend, would like to enroll in a course at Delta State University, a local government course. So I would like to make a motion that City Council supports, what are they wording for this? Open with wording?
The enrollment in the course.
Do we have the details of these?
Yes, there's a detailed course description on the website and some syllabus and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, it is relevant. It's a course in local government, it's a generalized course, it's essentially explaining how city governments work and function within the province of B.C. and amongst the community charter and the Local Government Act. Information that I believe is very pertinent to this role as a city councilor and I believe anybody at this table who doesn't understand the relationship between the two and how they affect the way we operate should by all means be interested or should have the urge to learn about these kinds of things because quite often, we find ourselves in positions where we really don't know and it's important that we do know how local governments operate and function.
Can I ask, is there an urgency in terms of your enrollment in these courses?
The course starts on following Monday.
Okay, because I have heard some concerns from councilors that these things get dumped on us without the detail that we need to really make a decision. And nobody's had an opportunity to read that at this point and yet will be asked to vote on it. So I'm just wondering if we... There's no room to put this off until council has an opportunity to see these things? Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, the other thing that we have to consider is when we're planning for these things is to ensure that we have a budget allocation for this. If we don't, if we haven't prepared for this in advance, we have to amend the financial plan to include that expenditure within the operating budget. When we did the budget preparations in, through October, through January, February last year and into March, we have to include these things. So these steps are important for us to include into it. I don't know if there is expenditures available within the financial plan, depending on value. But I mean, the amount that council set aside for conferences and education would have to be reviewed and then provided back to me.
Okay, and I'm not going to stop you from making a motion. You have every right to, counselor. But again, I think those are the concerns and the reasons.
I'll speak to that if I get a second.
Counselor Smith seconds the motion and speaking to it?
Yes, of course, I'm speaking to it. You know, I appreciate the fact that some councilors have concerns in regards to what you consider to be dropping by you the last second, but it's not uncommon for me to come to these meetings and to be asked to vote upon council's going to, let's say, EDAC conventions without prior knowledge of them or other conferences for that matter. I have no previous knowledge much, I'm sure why when it comes to these courses as opposed to conferences, those can be dumped on us as you put it and this can be. In regards to the funding, I personally was going to go to the UBCM this year. I chose not to so I can take this course because I want to learn more about how local governments operate. So if there was funding available for me to attend the UBCM, which was far, the cost of that would far exceed the cost of this, I have concerns how that money just disappears if I'm not going to that, but it was available.
Okay, thank you. For your comment, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to clarify, when we talked about council planning for the attendance to conferences and stuff, there was only a certain amount in there and council would have had to juggle their attendance based on who they felt, to make sure they had representation at these conferences, but make sure it felt within the budget according to their policy. This council policy is that they would have a resting period between having these things delivered to council and that they would attend them if the funding was available. So from a staff perspective, we would like to ensure that we do have the funding available before we commit to it or at least ask for the amendment to the financial plan to identify this expenditure. So, thank you.
Counselor Wires?
Can I ask, Your Worship, through you, how long is this course? When is it out or is there an opportunity?
I don't know whether Mr. Allen knows that or not.
And the cost?
I would say that that probably is Counselor Roshan's answer or you have to answer that. And Counselor Roshan?
Absolutely. The cost is $895, $895, the same as the previous courses. And it runs until the end of December.
And that's the same price for Counselor Smith's course?
Yeah, which is far less than UBCM that I do not go to so I can take this course.
Is it also a certificate course? Is it a certificate course?
Well, if you finish it, sure.
And you've taken other courses and you've...
Yes.
Got your certificate.
Nope.
You're not finishing?
Okay, well, back to the chair.
Yes, it's okay, sir.
Okay, and those details are not at this point clear. Counselor Crock?
Yeah. To back it up a bit to the statement you made about things being dropped on and stuff like that and then the other statements about, I guess, conventions or whatever. What I would have liked to have seen would be the background info because when I go through the weekly reports and stuff, I'll see that there is a convention or an EDAC thing coming out. There's coming up and you can click and you can see the info and there's who would be interested in attending this. So I think I mentioned it last time that I would like that type of information to know it's there, right? So Counselor Roshan says it's on their website, but I had to click to copy it over so that we'd get, oh, okay, that's what it's all about. So then you don't have all these questions.
Counselor Kendall?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I, again, I personally, last minute stuff. It just appears to me that if you're planning on taking a course, it wouldn't be terribly difficult to know a couple of weeks ahead of time or a month ahead of time that you're planning on taking something and just making council aware of what that is, what the cost is and how it pertains, again, in our policy. How does it specifically pertain to council-related duties? So if that was done, would make voting in favor of those things easier. Personally, I think that any training courses like this should have some type of... Something behind it. Us approving a training course with no obligation to finish the course, to, we have no expectation of paying for the course at this time. So I would like to see that there would be some expectation that the course is done and passed or some, something for council's money if that's what you're taking a class for. And maybe we can look at, if you wanted to take specific training courses, how does that, how could that be directly related to some further, something done for the city if the city's paying for the training? What would you provide? Would you provide something for that education back to the city? You know, I'm just saying that it's wonderful to take training courses, but again, how does it specifically address council and what is the, what is the benefit to council on taking these courses?
Okay, and we have the mover and secondor to wrap it up with succinct comments. Always. Michael. Counselor Roshan?
Thank you. Yeah, no, just further to what Counselor Kendall said there. Everything you said there is absolutely true. I assume you'll do as much when it comes to not dropping, let's say, EDAC conventions on us or us questioning why you're taking those and how it's pertinent to City Council information because of the exact same questions could be asked of when you go to conferences, not just of courses. The difference is, is what you do when you go to a conference is far more expensive. There is no end grade. You don't have to go to any of it. We'll never know. In this case, I can show you everyone to prove that I did exactly what I said I want to do. And at the end of the day, it is what it is. It's not just pretend to courses, it could be also the same way for conferences. So it works both ways.
Thank you. And Counselor Smith's wrapping it up.
Yeah, I...
Counselor Crock, please.
I have to, you know, just in response to Counselor Kendall's remarks there, I was a bit remiss in the last council, I mean, where I could have brought this up in advance. It just sort of fell off my desk, I'm afraid. And yeah, I agree that, you know, I'd be happy to be accountable for what I do and, you know, certainly when we go to conferences, it kind of was a nice report and hopefully share what we've learned from the conferences with the rest of council and the rest of our community. And I, you know, I think we do the same with this. Again, I apologize, I have myself for not having brought this to the council's attention earlier with more information so that we could make a more informed decision.
Counselor Crock, I'd hate to cause you anxiety.
Yeah, please. I guess my concern is the actual budget, like whether there is money in the budget. So is there a way to do it? If there is money, it would be approved. If there isn't money?
I don't know. I mean, the budget is something that has some malleability, but I think Mr. Allen's comments were more about the planning of our budget than whether or not we could squeeze $800 from here or there. So the motion as stands, ready for the question? This is to approve two courses, one for Counselor Smith, Counselor Roshan. All those in favor? Opposed? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion, please. I'd certainly hope that we can plan ahead in future. I think this is litching us out a bit that these things happen, so I would certainly encourage the continuation of planning for courses, but, you know, at this point, I think council has spoken.
Can we look at that policy, or that budget policy again? I know that we looked at it and we thought we had it kind of laid out, but I don't think we did.
I think it would be useful to see what people have done in the past year or two, and I did ask inappropriately for Diane to put that together for me a while ago, because I was curious. I think that should be something that allows Mr. Allen if we could share with council in terms of planning, because we are now in the budget process again for this coming year. So I think it really requires some analysis and planning, because we're going to be here for another year doing this.
Yeah, and to define it maybe a little bit better, so that it does say courses and this is-
We could put it into a committee of the whole discussion at the next opportunity.
Yeah, just so stuff like this doesn't happen, right? So that if people need or want that education for the betterment of the community, they can get that education once they want to go to conferences. I went to a conference earlier in the year, and that's the main reason I'm not going to UBCM, is because I went and did that, right? So I thought, okay, I'm taking that. If there was some other kind of course out there, then maybe, you know, just a bit more refinement.
Point taken. And Councillor Wires?
Well, Your Worship, I do have our January 15th policy number 301. Is that the correct one?
Mr. Mayor, it is. Yes.
Yes, so it says council workshops and training policy.
We do have it.
Yeah, we do.
I think we'd review that.
Yeah, other training courses and workshops which are provided by UBCM and/or AKBLG, for example, the Local Government Leadership Academy, will be available to members of council subject to available funding and subject to council approval by specific resolution.
Right, I don't think requesting at this point whether we have one, I think we're wanting to review it.
Yeah, because it doesn't really-
Funding for other training courses?
Mr. Mayor, we did, as part of council's request this year, it was reviewed and brought back, and there were some minor changes brought back to council earlier this year because we were trying to deal with the situation of attendance. And I think the council did support the taking of these courses. I think they just wanted to make sure that they did have proper planning and budget in place to deal with these things as they arose, so they could, you know, identify when we have the discussion at the beginning of the year in the budget process, saying, well, this is what each member of council will do, and this is where they'll represent the organization. So for instance, AKBLG, UBCM, FCM, and this, so members of council, so specifically maybe two members would be representing at FCM, two would represent, or four would represent at UBCM, and so on, so forth. I think that was the intent of that review. I don't think council was, from what I recall from the conversation, they weren't, they weren't, not in favor of councillors taking courses. I think they just wanted to make sure they had understood the whole picture of what was going on.
Right. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes reports. I have a number of things, but I think, well, there's one here that is not regional district. If you recall, we went in the stagecoach with a new team of horses that had never pulled that stagecoach before, and there were some scary moments when one went left and one went right, but hopefully the tack held out. But there was an offer from the lady who owns the horses to work with the Woodworkers Guild in the museum to make that available to us, and she has trailers and everything, to actually move the whole operation to other towns, so that we could decide that we were going to be present, say, in Osuias for the cherry festival or things like that. So I'd certainly like to ask that we take a look at that and how feasible it would be and what it would cost us to have cooperation with the museum society to provide a team of horses that would allow us to have that stagecoach displayed in other communities.
Long as we're not doing the OMAX suicide, right?
No, I think it represents the city really well, and there was a suggestion that councillors even dress up, that we could really put a bit into the look of that whole thing to make it look even more authentic, and that that would be a crowd pleaser for other parades in other towns. So I'm, the lady's name was Kathy?
Kathy.
I'm sorry, it just gave me, she's also the dog lady.
The boxchino.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if we couldn't open up some discussion with her in terms of what she might offer us in that aspect, planning ahead for next year's budget, obviously. So I won't take a motion on that. However, the other item was one that crosses over and following up, and Councillor Wires said, the rest of the regional district really would like to have the green bin program that we've got. They're very jealous. They got all kinds of zingers all the time, but at the same time, Councillor Wires and I have been pushing them to expand the program in Grand Forks, the low hanging garbage. That's at Silver Kettle, the hospital, the school. There's all kinds of opportunities there. There are some problems with existing contracts with collection agencies that need to be dealt with, but we've asked, and both of us now have put some pressure on the regional district, to report back at the next meeting on the feasibility of looking at, since it's set up and operating here, it would be pretty easy for us to pick up one of those as an example of how we could introduce institutional diversion programs and bring a lot more of that product to the landfill and get it composted. So we, Councillor Wires and I both followed up on this with pressure at the meetings that we've been at. And that's council reports. I've got some things to say about the regional district. So can I have a motion to accept council reports? Council with the root, Councillor Wires, all those in favor. On the regional level, the Kettle River Water Management Plan is meeting tomorrow night. The meeting is looking at options and various other kinds of directions it will be going. So I would certainly encourage anybody who's interested in that. It'll be here at the RDKB. It's an open meeting if you want to sit in and watch.
So it's tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night at seven, I believe, seven. And the Boundary Economic Development Commission's meeting tomorrow morning, nine thirty. Again, I'm really struggling with that whole committee, and I'm looking forward to them addressing the issue of a possible change of structure to that. And what Councillor Smith is bringing forward, I think, is really worth that group considering, as well as his own group, the BDAC group, considering it. I think we can't act in isolation from the BEDC, Boundary Economic Development Commission. The other thing on the environmental side that's happening is the new paper and packaging rules are coming down. They're happening really quickly, and they are going to have some interesting implications in the future for us. But basically, the government is saying to these companies, you've got to cover the cost of this. It shouldn't be the taxpayer. And so this has been drifting down for a while, but now becoming a reality. There'll be more decisions made on that coming up at the regional table, and I'll try to keep you up to date on it because it is a regional issue.
Mr. Mayor, is the regional district planning a, along with the provincial and federal government, are they planning a communications process for educating the community, so they're aware of actually what the implications are of the packaging process? Because they've started to enroll it about a year and a half ago, or maybe two years ago, and it's been kind of fragmented through the, through the process. So just to make sure that our community is aware, I just wondered if the regional district is planning a communications through the solubles program?
Well, I know they can rely on me to pass all the information, so I will be asking them what their plan is in terms of destination of information.
Perfect.
And that's it for my report. Can I have a motion to accept the report? Councillor Shaggin, Councillor Smith, all those in favor? And is there any other questions on the regional district at this point that anyone has? Hearing none, moving on. Our first item business on recommendations from staff is building manager, building inspection and bylaw services and unsightly premises, and council's being asked for a resolution here, and I think that Mr. Copan is going to give us further information on the site.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council. This has been an ongoing situation that started last February with key complaints. I visited the site on several occasions. In April, we sent off the first letter, along with the Ministry of Health's letter, because there's a numerous amount of trailers there that had no running water and no connection to sewage. And at that time, they were dumping the black water on the ground on the property, so the Ministry of Health got involved with this. This was a site in April, or back in the spring last year. And then the next event I went into was in August 12th. I went back to the site on another complaint, and the people that had moved away had again reestablished camp at this site. So Mr. Sandy was given another notice that this must be resolved. And again, the Ministry of, excuse me, the Ministry of Health was contacted again, and they once again gave us a letter stating that they cannot sort of provide water to these facilities through garden hosts. So at that point, they were asked to vacate the property. I'm now coming to council. If I am, roll up the pictures a little further. I think the other way.
Other way, sorry.
Yeah.
We can't one-stop?
Yeah, just keep going. Okay, that was the spring. A little further. Keep going. Keep going.
That's a bit for us.
You're top. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, Sasha. That was the waste in the early, early spring. Yeah, there's the April 12th letter. Okay, let's go through there. So April 12th, there's, and the Ministry of Health's letter, and then there's a series of pictures. This was the conditions in July. And then if you keep going down, you'll see the conditions. I went out today and took recent pictures. And these are as of today, and the site really hasn't improved. So I think at this point, I'm asking for a resolution of council to proceed with the cleanup, and give them a notice, and what, go in there with the contractor, I believe in the request here, put a date of September 20, or September 17th, as a contract cleanup date for this property. And Mr. Sandy was asked to appear before council tonight and has chosen not to. I guess I don't see him here.
Actually, I'm here. The owner of the property.
You're not the owner, sir.
Actually, the person that's resident.
You are the tenant on the property, but you're not the property owner.
And that stuff is mine, basically, and there has been improvements going on, things coming in and out. It's not the same as it was, even though I was told to stop it two months ago.
Mr. Mayor, if the proponent would like, if you would like, if council would like to have him speak at the meeting, they would have to pass a resolution to allow you to announce.
You'd like to hear from-
But I think we would only hear from the owner of the property.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be proper for us to hear from potentially somebody that was staying there or a resident of the site.
I think that's appropriate. Okay, so Councillor makes the motion. Councillor Doherty makes the motion.
When did you talk to the last of the owner?
I spoke to him on the phone about a week after he received the second notice.
When was the second one?
Second notice was on August 12th. So it had been about third week of August when I spoke to Sandy on the phone. And at that point, he told me that he would be proceeding with the cleanup.
Okay.
But some, some work has been done, and there has been some cleanup. I can't say that that hasn't happened, but the conditions still exist. And this is right on our highway entrance. It's something that people see constantly as they're driving in.
So there's still leave some time to clean up before the deadline that we'll establish tonight?
Yeah, the request I'm asking for is for council to pass a resolution so that I go into the property on the 17th. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, one thing I'd like to make sure that council is aware of, I mean, we have been talking with Interior Health, but the blatant disregard to dumping human feces onto the property and human waste when actually it is regulated under the federal act on how that is handled, that is just a blatant disregard for the public health. And this type of situation carrying on will create nothing but problems for the community because these situations require proper treatment. This type of, you know, disposal of waste is not acceptable in any public environment, and it was, there would definitely be encouraged for us to ensure that we do clean this up, because we cannot accept this type of environment, to ensure public health in our community.
Correct.
And the other thing was basically the second-
Excuse me, Danny, but you're not allowed to speak here tonight. Councillor Doherty?
September 17th?
Yeah, September 17th was the data requested to go in with the contractor and get an estimate for the cleanup. And from that point, we could, we'll set a date and a time. So in theory, we could give essentially thirty, at least thirty more days for them to do as much as humanly possible, or possibly get it all done-
Yes.
-before we even have to-
Okay, so you're going to be sending in-
I'll be sending the third, with the resolution to council, I'll be sending the third notice to Mr. Sandy.
And you're giving thirty more days.
And we'll be in that, yeah, twenty-five, thirty-day range.
Yeah, it certainly doesn't feel like you're being heavy-handed here at all.
No, we, well, we started this in February and it's gone, it just kept us waiting. And we're now into late fall here, and it's still existing.
Can I ask for that motion?
Remove.
Councillor Wires, second. Councillor Doherty, discussion?
Do you want me to read it?
No, it's too long. I guess, you know, these are basically low-income people that are having housing problems, and I feel badly about that, and I'm hoping maybe, you know, some of the other things we're doing in the community will take up the slack here, because I think for some people, that's all they have, money to live in, and it's really a sad state. But at the same point, we have health concerns here, we have all kinds of issues that we can't let go, and so I support the motion on the floor. Further comment? Everybody understand? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry.
At this time, Mayor Taylor, I would also like to request from council a motion to have this go before legal counsel, just so they can review it, to ensure that we're doing all the proper steps before we make any, anything.
Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, I mean, that would be, we need to set a resolution for that. I appreciate what Mr. Copan's asking. As part of our due diligence, we will have, we will seek the legal opinion on ensuring that our bylaw is enforced at this process to make sure we don't get into litigation in respect to this.
Yes.
But it will, that will be the natural course that we would take, and that would come to council with camera, to get any information.
All right, thanks very much. Okay, all right, we are moving on. Next item of business is the Manager of Development and Engineering, unplanned expenditures. We talked about this in depth this morning, about locating the infrastructure in the city. Are we going to do the presentation on that? Can I ask Mr. Allen, is that the plan here?
Mr. Mayor, we could go through it again if we wanted to. It was presented this morning in committee, the poll. We have it on the computer for, would you like?
I don't think it's necessary. I think we really beat it up this morning, and I think those people understand the importance of this ninety thousand dollars or so investment in really getting that system under control. Councillor, yeah, Councillor Doherty, Councillor Shaggin, seconds. End discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just a minor amendment to the, the financial, the financial officers recommend that we have a, to add to the resolution that it be funded from the gas tax reserve as part of that.
Right, which we did discuss.
We did discuss it, but we need to include that as part of the resolution.
Councillor Shaggin. All right, and, okay, all right, ready for the question?
I just want to speak to it for a second.
Sir?
Speak to it.
Speak.
Thank you. I just want to point out to, whether it be in the paper- I just want to point out to, whether it be the paper that wasn't here this morning, just inasmuch as it's being funded by the gas tax by this resolution, it will have no resulting change in taxation.
No, and in the long run, it's going to save us some money in the installation of water meters. Right. Okay, ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you. Correspondents, we're down to information items as usual. This will take a second. There's only a couple.
Two of them.
Two. Yes, number, yeah, go on then. The first one is the Grand Forks Park in the park. Event organizers of the 2014 event sponsorship. Council to receive for discussion proposed in consideration of event sponsorship. This is the car show, which was highly successful, and they'd like to repeat that next year. So I'm, at this point in time, I think we've received it, we'll talk about it in our budgeting process, what we were planning to do, but that was a seeming, I think, a really good event for town. It was well-attended by everyone. And I didn't make a motion on the two items here, but can we agree that we will conform to our decisions on these motions? So moved. Floyd Smith, say to me on this, I'm getting time time.
Sure.
Counselor Smith makes the motion. Second, Counselor Worschag. Okay, so we're receiving this one for discussion in our future budgeting. Second item is the Sam, Good Sam Club, 10% discount on municipal campground. Guns resolve to approve the request for the Good Sam membership to receive a 10% discount. I would assume that the reason that this is going to be a separate motion is that we need to get back to them so they can start planning the event and building it for next year. Counselor Smith.
I'll move that.
Moving it, and second, Counselor Kendall. Any discussion on that? I'm certainly, you know, proud to know that we've become an attractive enough community to have a Good Sam Club want to be here, so let's treat them good. And the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, carried. That concludes our items for discussion, and the motion is that we do what we said we were going to do on these, which only includes one other item. All those in favor? Good. It's a little messy, but thanks for working with me. And back to the items on the agenda. Okay, bylaws. We are looking for first, second, and third reading to the annual tax exemption bylaw. We have to do those one at a time, so can I have the first reading on bylaw number 1976 for 2014? Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? And second reading, Counselor Kendall, Counselor Smith, all those in favor? And third reading, Counselor Worschag and Counselor Smith, all those in favor? Okay, that covers that bylaw. The second, the second bylaw here is the 72nd Avenue closure, and this is final reading to this bylaw, and it's the road closure by the multi-agency project site. Can I have a motion for final reading? Counselor Wires, Counselor Doherty, all those in favor? Carried. And final reading for the Climate Action Reserve Fund, establishment of the Climate Action Reserve Fund, which we've all discussed as a better option than giving our money to some outsiders in the city. Counselor Wires makes the motion. Counselor Doherty, second. Is that any discussion?
Yes. Just, you know, they're picking out around some ideas there, positively increasing the amount per ton that the city would contribute to this funding or develop it more quickly. What, what provisions would have to be made in order to have that happen? Like, you know, having passed this now, is there an opportunity to change the amount, or do we, will we have to go through and do this whole process again?
Counselor, it's turn.
Mr. Mayor, to answer that question, as part of the, as part of our review, you've established the bylaw and the reserve now for this year. There's a second portion to be added resolution to include in the financial plan, and you'll read that resolution here shortly. But the idea, the question that Counselor Smith has is, we could review that each year and talk about it during budget discussions, determining on the planning, because we are, we are essentially taking it from one reserve and putting it into another reserve. So essentially, council has the prerogative to put as much into that reserve as they so choose. So if the council chooses the $25 a ton and they want to review that every year during the budget process, we can, we can review that and amend the bylaw each year if we so choose. I think it's something that council would probably want to do because as they look at, look at potentially projects that may impact the community that are, you know, follow that general nature, that was where the funding would, would come from, to look into that. So it would be a dedicated fund, if you will. So we can review it each year if council so chooses, and maybe that discussion could come up, and they committed the whole discussion to ask for that to happen.
Okay, and just to clarify this, that we are including in this motion to allocate the city's carbon offset 2012 payment to the Climate Action Reserve Fund and include the allocation in the upcoming 2013, 2017 financial plan amendment so that we would have an opportunity at that point to out those figures.
Well, we would have the, just included into this, as part of the financial plan amendment, it'd be included in this year's financial plan, Mr. Mayor. So that'd be the resolution. You're just simply saying you're keeping your money and saving it and putting it into your own climate action reserve account.
Right.
And we're identifying it.
Thank you. All right, the motion's on the table. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. And we have a late item, and that is recommended from today's committee of the whole meeting to include as a late item in the agenda for today. And our secretary has given us a motion that she's drafted for this, be resolved if the city determines to allocate to the boundary country regional chamber of commerce a professional portfolio of Grand Forks. Grand Forks pins and business cards, schwag or bling items to wear and give away, other promotional materials of the Grand Forks that may be available to be used for the purposes of promoting Grand Forks. Boundary country regional chamber of commerce's executive director's visit to China this October. So moved. Counselor Smith, second. Counselor Kendall. This is really exciting. I don't know if the press have picked this up yet, but the Chamber of Commerce CAO is going to China in a junket that will give us an opportunity to meet and hopefully make some connections with China. Counselor Smith and Counselor Kendall.
Was there an amount? Was there an amount?
No, we didn't put an amount. He didn't ask specifically for any items. We were just looking at what we could find that we could provide to him, but there was no dollar amount. There's a certain amount of staff time in putting it together, and the bling and schwag that we're putting is worth money, so that's why it's a motion here today. Counselor Crawford.
It said pins. Do we have any pins?
I am not sure we're ready to have a new pin. Mr. Allen.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we've seen the sample and we've showed them to the group. I know that they've been ordered, so it's just a matter of them getting here, so we don't have that. Then the other piece was to convert the documents into Cantonese, like Counselor Smith had pointed out, and Chinese.
Mandarin.
Mandarin, sorry, yes. Yeah, so we would actually have them read, basically to their culture.
Okay, so that's motion on the table. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. That concludes our agenda, and we open it to questions from the public media. Comments, questions? Just joking.
Good evening, worship counselors. Nigel James is my name. I've been here now for four years, just over, and delighted with the improvement of the city in general. In general terms, I think we're going in definitely in the right way. It was about three years ago that myself and Counselor Worschag and sort of tried to hold hands and try to get the rugby fields sorted and the soccer field and so on, and at last, it's working. And the thing is, the message there is, if you provide a facility, people will tend to use it. If you haven't got a facility, they won't. It's very simple. It's just that it's costly, and we are probably short of real estate to do all these things, and it's a matter of priority. My, I'm very keen that people partake of exercise whenever they can. To that end, probably the best way of improving exercise is to do away with all car parking spaces in downtown and make them walk, because then they'll have to walk. However, that might be considered a.
Yes.
And the next one was, in fact, about a year ago, Counselor Worschag put forward in his report, he asked, it wasn't really a report, it was a request for some cash to go and do some training courses, about one and a half thousand dollars, I think, for two courses. Again, it's at the length hour, it comes forward. And at that time, I made an inquiry of somebody. I said, do, does the city have a policy on document, a policy document on training? And somebody said, yes, they do. I haven't, I didn't ask for one, a copy of it. But one of the problems we have, if you haven't got a policy document, then the precedent has been set, and everybody was starting, could start to jump on the backboard, the counselors, the management staff, and the union staff. So therefore, if we haven't got a policy document, I would suggest that one is produced to Sweden.
In fact, we do have one, and you're liberty to review it if you wish. I think there are copies around the table here today.
Yeah, thank you very much. I would like a copy.
Thank you. Point to that.
And no doubt in that document, it probably says, suggests expenditure in a timely fashion, no doubt. But if it doesn't, that's one amendment that should be added to the document.
Yes.
Another, is, your worship, is this the last meeting before you go to UCBM?
UVCN, yes.
It is. Probably three and a half years ago, I opened my mouth, as is often the case, and I mentioned that there was, it is, to my view, pretty obvious that Area D and Grand Forks need to be combined to make the whole thing efficient. I believe that there have been thoughts about this, but it probably comes back to the provincial government to decree whether it can happen. And also, a little, rather more than that, the counselors be allocated to a ward, as I mentioned before one evening. My representatives, all six of them, which is a bit difficult perhaps, and if they were responsible for all the pieces or something like that, then it would be, they would tend to focus their ideas on, and people could focus their ideas to their council and make it more efficient.
Can I suggest, Mr. James, that that would be a good committee, it was a whole discussion when we actually have some audience and we have an opportunity for more in-depth discussion, so.
Good point, your worship. Unfortunately, you see the committee at the whole, and I think this idea of nine o'clock in the morning is good this morning. I think there were two citizens who weren't, who weren't.
It was not listening.
In cooperation.
No, but I think if we publicized a discussion of that nature that you're suggesting, that we certainly would get better participation.
Anyway, just, the other thing is, I again ask that the GIS, GPS, whatever we're going to do, there is an ideal opportunity here to select a member of staff providing the collective agreement, does it, can bear with the union and go along with it, and they're very keen on training, in most cases, that this selected person, the best person from the staff could be, and when, when the art of P goes out, then say that there will be a staff member there to help be trained and also to act as a bit of a gopher, as a liaison to help the speedy work of the identification of the water shaft valves and so on. I really think that that is, it's an opportunity we can't afford to miss.
And I would dismiss the CAO if he didn't think of those things beforehand.
True. But I just, I'm concerned, citizen, it would save us money, I believe, in the long run.
And I believe good management says that we would do exactly that, and I would expect that of our CAO.
Thank you. And, yeah, there are another couple things, they're the most important, except for the, there was a lot of time spent by the manager of engineering and so on, talking with, I forget the name of the gentleman and the lady, about their containers.
Yes.
And that, I happened to pass by when I was out for a trot today, and I noted that the containers are not included in the building whatsoever. So whether the really, that the original permit should be reviewed and renewed or whatever, I don't know. That's not my business. But it was mentioned by the CAO, and very wisely, I think, is that is that containers is going to become, I would suspect, a bigger problem for the city as people get more used to them. And they are not buildings, I don't believe, and no way can they be considered being a building.
And in fact, we are on top of this, and our CAO is doing some investigations in terms of what other communities are doing to control the so-called containers or CCAMS. And we'll be bringing a report back to council so that we can consider whether we wish to protect our community from the proliferation of those or not.
Thank you. The gain the sooner the better, because otherwise.
Yes, it is very timely.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you, worship.
Contrary rumor, apparently, that I am really anti the new logo and the signs. I may have mitts to pick with them and the process and everything else, but I congratulate you on the signs. They look nice, they're very visible at night. I might have issues with punctuation, but they do look nice. You know, I was the first person to get that put on a shirt in this town, and I think we should just get over it, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And any further? Hearing none, call for adjournment.